At 7:33 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Trish Piatzou and Jan Alderman Schmidt will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Gidge. Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Elise Gola.
Here.
Alderman Tenza.
President.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
We have 12 members present.
Also in attendance this evening is Mayor James Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen A. Bolton. Okay, tonight we're going to start off with being no objection, I will suspend the rules to go out of order to canvass the votes from the special municipal election held March 5th, 2019. Communications.
Communication from Patricia Piatzou, City Clerk, relative to canvass of votes, special municipal election.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that the results recorded on the City Clerk's record of returns for the Alderman at Large race at the special municipal election on March 5th, 2019 be declared final and conclusive, and that Benjamin M. Clemmons, having received the largest number of votes cast, be declared elected to the office of Alderman at Large for a term to expire January 5th, 2020.
You've all heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. I declare Ben Clemmons duly elected to the Board of Aldermen for a term to expire January 5th, 2020. Would Ben please come forward?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as an Alderman at Large in the city of Nashville according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter, the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Welcome, Alderman at Large, Ben Clemmons. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, remarks by the mayor. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. Well, first I want to congratulate Alderman Clemmons on being elected and now sworn in as our 15th Alderman. Of course, he's been here before and he's familiar with the role, but it's nice to have you join the board. So the main issue tonight is the budget, which I'm going to discuss in a little bit of detail in a moment. But I have to apologize first because I need to leave after my remarks and after we recognize Ms. Giannelli, because my wife had eye surgery today and the doctor says not to leave her alone for any extended period of time. So I wanted to come in at least to talk about the budget, see if you had any questions or comments at this point, but if not, after Ms. Giannelli is congratulated, then I will have to depart. So I apologize for that. So as I mentioned, as I said before, in the state of the city and elsewhere, the budget is going, is up a little less than 3%. The main cause of the increase is that we were hit with a 11% increase, or about $3 million, in the cost of health care for city employees. As I'm sure you know, the city is self-insured, so this is based upon our experience this year, working with our consultant and projecting into next year. This $3 million increase creates, of course, a lot of pressure across the city budget. So I have proposed a budget which maintains the quality of services and increases them to some degree, I think, but in essence, holds the line, and the bottom line being that we need to deliver a tax increase of 3% or less. Now, the major, as a result of this pressure and as a result of the need to keep the tax rate as low as we possibly can, I requested of the departments that they provide budgets of 2.25%. Many of the departments did that, but the major departments didn't think they could do that, so they proposed budgets higher than that number. So our major departments, which of course are school, police, and fire, my budget reduces their request to something at or somewhat above the 2.25% guideline. The one, the major issues in the three departments, in the school department, what is required or what is being requested is that there be ELL teachers added to the budget, number one. Number two, that school psychologists be added to the budget, and number three, that pairs for the kindergarten program be added. Kindergarten pairs for the kindergarten classes that were expanded a couple of years ago. Now, I, my budget increases the school department by 2.25%, but in addition, because of the, I think, the very eloquent case that many people have made for the need for ELL teachers, it also includes, in addition to that, $200,000 in contingency designated for school ELL teachers. So that if the school department wishes to use those funds for that purpose, they could be released by you, either during the budget process or afterwards, to help meet that ELL need. And that would provide enough funds for four additional ELL teachers. In the fire department, the major challenge has been dispatching. The number of calls has grown exponentially over the last few years with no increases in dispatchers. They are now up to 11,000-plus calls that they are fielding every year. We, in last year's budget, increased that, the number of dispatchers by four, in other words, by enough to add one person, all shifts, from two, expand from two to three shifts. And this budget continues that, but it also collects revenue from the ambulance contract. We believe, we're highly confident that we can negotiate a payment of approximately $350,000 from the ambulance company, which is kind of now standard in the industry, to help defray the cost of the additional dispatchers, because they do help to dispatch medical calls, of course. In the police department, the major challenge is the number of officers. They have been down for some period of time, usually because they are not able to fill all the positions. As a result, there's some, there's some accumulated funds in the payroll account which they've been able to use. Now, they are, have a plan, and I'm sure they will explain it to you, to get to full complement, which would not be fully possible with the budget increase of 2.25%. I think we can make progress and certainly maintain the number of officers we have and maybe increase a little bit, but we may not in one year be able to get to the full number that are authorized, which is 179. All these issues, of course, will be discussed in detail, I'm sure, at the budget hearings. Alderman Dowd has already scheduled the hearings for the next couple of months, and I, of course, will be available to discuss any questions or comments that you have at various times during the budget review process. Additional items within the budget include the changes that were recommended in the assessing audit. The position of chief assessor is, does not appear in the budget. As I said, the audit recommended that that be eliminated, but in exchange, the position of Administrative Services Director, which I think we discussed in some detail last Thursday night, has been returned to the city budget. That was a position that was in City Hall in management of assessing and other related functions for some decades, was removed back during Mar-a-Losso's term, but the audit and recommended and the budget suggests that that position be reestablished. And of course, we discussed all of this in some detail on Thursday, but if necessary, we could bring KRT in to help with management of the assessing function under a contract basis, but that may not be necessary, and the budget suggests that we sort of proceed with caution with respect to that and make decisions as we get into it. There are two positions in the budget that have not been there before. Both, I believe, are positions that will pay for themselves. As I said, in the state of the city, there is an energy manager position that would review energy saving projects in detail, and those can be extremely complicated if you want to do them right, with city officials and with the school department, to try to realize savings both in school buildings, city buildings, and also generate other potentially energy generating projects that we could undertake. And they're split with the school department. They put in half the money, and this budget puts in half, is, and it's, I think it's 30,000 on each side, is a grant writer position. The city does not have a grant writer, and we think that both the school department and I believe that we could bring in funds, significantly more grant funds than we do now, if we had someone who was looking in detail at grant opportunities. The school department had one for a little while, but that was phased out because of budget needs, and having now discussed this with the superintendent, Dr. Mosley, we have agreed that we would split the cost and then jointly utilize the person to try to bring in additional funds. Again, a position that I believe can ultimately pay for itself. Those are some of the major outlines of the budget. Again, to return to the main point, the budget is up slightly less than 3%. Without this $3 million increase, it would be less than 2%. Without the $3 million increase in the health care, which is, of course, a fixed cost, the budget would be up again, less than 2%. So I think it is a tight budget, but one that attempts to meet some significant needs, like the ELL teachers, like the dispatchers, and other, the other issues that I've mentioned. So, Madam Chair, or Madam President, that is a summary of the budget, and I'm certainly available if anyone wishes for questions or comments now, but as I said, once we give Ms. Giannelli, Lola, her certificate and we congratulate her past the resolution, I do have to leave as a result of my wife's eye surgery.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of the mayor, all stood on this side. Okay, recognition period.
First reading of Resolution 19-106, recognizing Lola Giannelli as New Hampshire's first kid governor.
There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for the second reading of Resolution 19-106.
Second reading of Resolution 19-106, recognizing Lola Giannelli as New Hampshire's first kid governor.
Alderman Clea.
I move Resolution R. 19-106 for final passage.
Question is for final passage of Resolution 19-106. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Should we read it? Should we get June?
Yeah, Alderman Clea, and Lola Giannelli, if you want to come forward.
Lola, recognizing, this is Resolution R. 19-106, recognizing Lola Giannelli, New Hampshire's first kid governor, the city of Nashville, in the year 2019. Whereas Lola is New Hampshire's first kid governor, the fifth graders of New Hampshire elected Lola, who attends Sunset Heights Elementary School to serve as the 2019 New Hampshire kids, New Hampshire's kid governor. She is working with her executive council to bring awareness of animal cruelty to the state of New Hampshire. Whereas Lola is starting a club at Sunset Heights to make dog toys for Humane Society. She is also providing Beaver Meadow School in Concord and Canterbury Elementary School with donated supplies so that her executive council members, Evelyn Ellis Haynes and Ben Vashan, can start clubs in their schools. Whereas Lola will be working with Nashville's state legislators to propose a law to prohibit the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits at pet stores. This recently became a law in California. She and her executive council will be collecting signatures. Whereas Lola volunteers at the end 68 hours of hunger to bring awareness to her executive council member Evelyn Ellis Haynes' platform of poverty. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Nashville that the mayor and the Board of Aldermen recognize Lola Giannelli for her accomplishments of being elected 2019 kid governor and her volunteer efforts. We thank her for setting a great example and inspiring others to get involved and help causes they believe in. Thank you, Lola.
And Lola?
The board has a little gift for you. Yes, you can. I can hold that for you. It's a paw print, animal activist ribbon. So, like the one I have. Thank you so much.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meetings of February 26, accepted, placed, unfilled, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication from Larry D. Goodhue, CEO Penetech Corporation, relative to the Penetech East Utility, Inc., request for approval of term loan with Co-Bank ACB.
There being no objection, will accept the communication, place it on file, and refer it to the Penetech Water Special Committee.
Communication from Andrew J. Lavoy, Chief of Police, relative to Resolution 19-120.
There being no objection, will accept the communication, place it on file, and refer it to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Our first speaker is Adam Marku. Can I give you name and address for the record, please?
Adam Marku, For DeLorean. I'm here on behalf of the Nashville Teachers Union as their elected president. Last time I was here, I was not the most controversial item on the agenda. I like that. I am also, tonight, not the most controversial item on the agenda. I'm here to speak on behalf of the food service workers and their contract. It's a three-year deal. This group, again, as I said about our secretaries the last time, when you think of school, you think of teachers, but behind the scenes, you don't see food service. They're in the cafeteria. Many parents and public officials don't see them because you're in the office or in a classroom, and without these people, our kids don't eat. And for those of you who don't work with kids, a hungry kid is an angry kid, and that's where the term hangry came from, probably from a little six-year-old. These ladies and one gentleman work very hard at all 17 schools to make sure these kids are fed every day. We may not like what they feed us, but that's the federal government's fault and not ours. I like to remind the students that. This was, I would have to say, one of the more enjoyable negotiation sessions we've had. There's a lot of things that we came together on right away and said, this is important, including more professional development for the food service workers in line with what we're doing with the teachers, the pairs, the food service, the secretaries, and the other staff within our building, and it's important to recognize that they're part of our school community, and I think this made a major step towards that, along with some other things that were mutually beneficial to improve working conditions for this group of people. I'd like to thank the Budget Review Committee for their quick 10-minute work of this proposal at their meeting, and ask for the full board's approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula Johnson?
I guess I should grow a little bit. I'll just hold it. My name is Paula Johnson, 15 Westborn Drive. I'm going to speak here regarding R-1, 18073. I want, I forgot to bring something up on the last comment period for the, I forgot that, and I had mentioned it to the president of the board, you did have an Alderman at one time, and it should really state that in the city of Nashville, there was an Alderman that had a Massachusetts driver's license and lived in Nashville. Where was his residency? Was the residency in Massachusetts or was the residency in New Hampshire? And some people might remember the ward that he was in, and unfortunately, who knew where he actually lived? Was it in Massachusetts with the license or was it in New Hampshire here? Ward 8, former Alderman from Ward 8. That whole big controversy back then. So that, so I think when Mr. T. Boom says, who qualifies and should be stated exactly what's, where they are, I think it should be, just make sure it says, a resident of the city of Nashville. And so we don't have this mistake again, because that was a big mistake.
The second thing is, I'd like to speak about, is the downtown parking fees that we're raising here, and I'm a little bit concerned about that. We're going to raise it, and I guess it's going to go to the Downtown Improvement Committee, again, for the parking garages. That money should be put into the general fund and be used that way. It's for downtown? No. When those parking meters were put in and we raised everything, it should have been general fund, not going just for the downtown, because I had just mentioned to the Alderman from Ward 8, I never realized that on Daniel Webster Highway, that there's no crosswalks. You know how busy that is? Everybody go down to Daniel Webster Highway between Spittbrook and Daniel Webster Highway? You can't get across. It's like Dodge car. They used to play dodgeball, Dodge car. And somebody's going to get hurt eventually, because now it's getting worse. And plus, you've got the lights are not synchronized anyplace in this city. It's a disgrace. It's a disaster, because I worked down in that area, and I see the cars lined up, and I was noticing the other day that this gentleman was trying to get across the street, and I'm waiting for the crosswalk signals. There is none. We have it on West Tower Street where I live, because my Alderman did it several years ago, Mike Tabasco, and I asked him, "Oh, we don't have it at a busy intersection? Are you kidding me?" So why don't you take that money, change the ordinance, take that money that goes to the Downtown Improvement Committee, and take it and put it where it needs to be in the city, so our taxes don't go up any higher, for this nonsense? You know, there's other places in the city that we need work done and crosswalks, and it's not just downtown, because the action is down at the Pheasant Lane Mall and the south end of town in Ward 8. So I would ask that we please take care of that area on Daniel Webster Highway and start getting crosswalks and get some pedestrian walk signals. Thank you. I sought out this position, having never served at the polls before, sight unseen. It's something I enjoy. I just feel that there's a solution beyond what we have written in the current resolution that can serve better the city's finances as well as the people of the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Teebum?
Fred Teebum, 24 Cheyenne. First, I'd like to say that there's a difference between public hearing and public comment. This is a public comment. Public hearing, you can ask questions. Public can ask questions. Public comment, all you do is make comment. Now, on the, I don't normally come up and talk about appointments, but I like to do it in this case. We have an appointment with Mary Lou Blaisdell. Now, we just went through a whole so-called assessment of the assessing office and found it to be seriously lacking, and the chief assessor incompetent. I don't know all the details. I didn't sit in last Thursday. But the assessment has been a disaster. The person that blew the lid on this whole thing was Laura Ortalano. Now, on the appointments, you'll find Mary Lou Blaisdell being reappointed to the Board of Assessors. She's been on the Board of Assessors for many, many years, at least twenty, maybe longer. And frankly, as I understand, I didn't talk to her directly, don't really know the lady, but she didn't really want to serve again. The person that wanted to serve on the Board of Assessors was Laurie Ortalano. Laurie Ortalano blew the lid on this whole assessment fiasco, evaluation. Laurie Ortalano asked the mayor, and she told me this herself, asked the mayor to be appointed to the Board of Assessor. I couldn't think of any one more qualified. She put in an enormous amount of time, looking at the disaster of this evaluation, spent a huge amount of her own money, looking at cards and all the dollar per card you have to pay for. And when she asked the mayor, he declined to appoint her. And he reappointed Mary Lou Blaisdell, probably against her own wishes. In fact, Mary Lou Blaisdell was being appointed also to the Performance Arts Center, and she runs a business, because he doesn't want someone on the Board of Assessors that does the kind of thing that Laurie Ortalano does. And I don't understand that. In fact, the entire Board of Assessors ought to step down in shame, because they have a policy overview position, and they did nothing, absolutely nothing. So they could serve the time, but if there's a vacancy in the Board of Assessors, then certainly that ought to be Mary, that ought to be Laurie Ortalano. So I'm asking you, when that appointment comes up this evening, you vote in unison to take that appointment back to the Personnel Committee, or Administrative Affairs Committee, as they call it, and reevaluate that appointment. Like to make a motion on that point. I understand parking fees are being raised. That's about the dumbest thing you can do. I never shop in downtown, and I know lots of people that don't shop in downtown, because why should you pay parking fees? Instead of lowering them, you're raising them. That's a sure way to have people not shop in downtown. It's a pain. You shouldn't be doing it. You shouldn't be lowering parking fees. This amount of money you're collecting is, compared to $300 million of a budget, is minuscule. There's one final thing I wanted to say, is I didn't get a chance, because President, you didn't call it the second opposition period, and you didn't call the comment. There were three aldermen that went to jail in 1993 because of corruption with their votes. And when I was an alderman, one alderman, Ward Eight, went to jail in Massachusetts because of repeated drunken driving. You don't want an appointed alderman to be, become a felon for whatever purpose. If he is elected, that's one thing. Appointed, that's a really serious problem. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Laurie Wilshire, President, Board of Aldermen, relative to revised committee assignments.
Alderman O'Brien?
Excuse me. I would like to make a motion to accept and place on file and approve revised committee assignments as presented.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches, relative to the contract for the 2019 paving program arterial roadways construction.
Alderman Jettie?
I move to accept, place on file, and award the contract to Brock's Industries in the amount of $6,853,473.
Heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion?
If I could, I could just comment. So, you know, we've all heard complaints about the condition of the roadways. This is part of the program the city's undertaken, you know, bonded amount to repave, you know, last year, we repaved, I think, like 25 miles of roadway. This and the other thing that's coming up right after this one will contract another $10 million to repave another approximately, it's over 20 miles, of more roadway. So for those people who have been wanting us to repair the roads, this is, this is the money that we're spending to do it.
The motion before us is to accept, place on file, and award the contract to Brock's Industries in the amount of $6,853,473. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches, relative to the contract for the 2019 paving program local and collector roadways.
Alderman Laws?
I move to accept, place on file, and award the contract to Sunshine Paving in the amount of $4,350,642.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches, relative to the contract for 2019 CIPP lining project.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright?
I move to accept, place on file, and award the contract to Kenyon Pipeline Inspection LLC in the amount of $2,825,135.
Motion, you've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches, relative to the contract for the 2019 sore replacement construction.
Alderman O'Brien?
I move to accept, place on file, and award a contractor, Ann Greenies and Sons Incorporated, in the amount of $1,1,808.
Heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
In accordance with the national revised ordinances, street petitions for, street acceptance petitions have been received for Adelaide Avenue and Pendant Lane.
There being no objection, I'll accept the petitions for street acceptance, refer them to the Committee on Infrastructure, and schedule public hearings for Wednesday, April 24th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Joint Convention with Woodlawn Pinewood Cemetery Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I'll declare that the Board of Aldermen meet in joint convention with the Woodlawn Pinewood Cemetery Board of Trustees for the purpose of electing two trustees and call for nominations. Mr. Jensen?
Niles Jensen for Catalina Lane. I am chairman of the Board of Trustees for Woodlawn and Pinewood Cemeteries. Our Board of Trustees would want to renominate Howard Frisell and Daniel Boslovich for five-year terms to expire in 2024.
There being no objection, I'll close the nominations. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
I did not get the names, but I support both nominations.
Daniel Boslovich and Howard Frisell.
Yeah, I support those. Thank you.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright?
I support both nominees.
Alderman Dab? Oh, sorry.
Yes, I support Howard Frisell and David Boslovich.
Alderman Cle?
I too support Daniel Boslovich and Howard Frisell.
Alderman Lopez?
I support Daniel Boslovich and Howard Frisell.
Alderman Karen?
Mr. Frisell and Mr. Boslovich.
Alderman Jettie?
Howard Frisell, Daniel Boslovich.
Alderman Milizzi-Gola?
Howard Frisell, Daniel Boslovich.
Alderman Tenza?
Howard Frisell, Daniel Boslovich.
Alderman Schmidt?
Howard Frisell and Daniel Boslovich.
Alderman Clemmons?
Frisell and Boslovich.
Alderman Wilshire?
Daniel Boslovich and Howard Frisell.
Trustee Uponovich? Trustee Benninger? Trustee Boslovich? Trustee Colom? Trustee Farwell? Trustee Frisell? Trustee Whitney? Mayor Donches? We have 17 votes for Daniel Boslovich and 17 votes for Howard Frisell.
Mr. Boslovich and Mr. Frisell here this evening? Could you come forward for the oath of office, please?
Raise your right hands, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as trustees of the Woodlawn Pinewood Cemetery according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. Congratulations.[1358.13][1358.13][applause]
There being no objection, I declare that the joint convention now arise. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the February 25th, 2019 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the February 27th, 2019 Committee on Infrastructure accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 4th Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 6th, 2019 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments. I just wanted to declare that the appointment of Mary Lou Blaisdell to the Board of Assessors has been withdrawn.
Conservation Commission?
Sherri Dutzy, 18 Swart Terrace, Nashua, New Hampshire, for a term to expire December 31st, 2021. Is Sherri still here? There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Sherri Dutzy of 18 Swart Terrace, Nashua, to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2021, and she will be sworn in at later date.
Cultural Connections Committee?
Margaret Lorette, new appointment, 4 Cimarron Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire February 1st, 2021, and Suzanne Harvey, a new appointment, 8 Crawford Lane, Nashua, for a term to expire March 1st, 2022. Are Ms. Lorette and Ms. Harvey still here? Come forward for the oath of office?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of Nashua's Downtown Improvement Committee, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. Thank you.[1497.53][1497.53][applause]
There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of Margaret Lorette, 4 Cimarron Drive, and Suzanne Harvey, 8 Crawford Lane, to the Cultural Connections Committee for terms to expire February 1st, 2021, and March 1st, 2022, respectively.
Downtown Improvement Committee?
David Grabowski, 172 Main Street, Nashua, moving to a full member, term to expire December 31st, 2019. Mary Lou Blaisdell is a reappointment, 32 Webster Street, Nashua, for a term to expire December 31st, 2020, and Richard Lannan is a reappointment of 7 Taggart Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire December 31st, 2020. There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of the following individuals to the Downtown Improvement Committee. Dave Grabowski, 172 Main Street, for a term to expire December 31st, 2019, Mary Lou Blaisdell of 32 Webster Street, Nashua, and Richard Lannan of 70 Taggart Drive, Nashua, for terms to expire March 31st, 2020. I didn't see anyone. Dave Grabowski is here, and I did not see Mary Lou Blaisdell or Richard Lannan this evening.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as members of the National Cultural Connections Committee of the city of Nashua, faithfully and impartially, and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. Thank you.[1606.41][1606.41][applause]
There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of Margaret Lorette, 4 Cimarron Drive, and Suzanne Harvey, 8 Crawford Lane, to the Cultural Connections Committee for terms to expire February 1st, 2021, and March 1st, 2022, respectively.
Downtown Improvement Committee?
David Grabowski, 172 Main Street, Nashua, moving to a full member, term to expire December 31st, 2019. Mary Lou Blaisdell is a reappointment, 32 Webster Street, Nashua, for a term to expire December 31st, 2020, and Richard Lannan is a reappointment of 7 Taggart Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire December 31st, 2020. There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of the following individuals to the Downtown Improvement Committee. Dave Grabowski, 172 Main Street, for a term to expire December 31st, 2019, Mary Lou Blaisdell of 32 Webster Street, Nashua, and Richard Lannan of 70 Taggart Drive, Nashua, for terms to expire March 31st, 2020. I didn't see anyone. Dave Grabowski is here, and I did not see Mary Lou Blaisdell or Richard Lannan this evening.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of Nashua's Downtown Improvement Committee, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitutional laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God.[1711.53][1711.53][applause]
Mind Falls Park Advisory Committee?
Nicholas Serpa, reappointment, 9 Johnston Place Merrimack, for a term to expire December 31st, 2019. Excuse me. There being no objection, I'll confirm the appointment of Nicholas Serpa, 9 Johnston Place Merrimack, to the Mind Falls Park Advisory Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2019. Is Nicholas here tonight? He will be sworn in at a later date.[1745.53][1745.53][applause] Unfinished business resolutions.
Sixth reading of Resolution 18-073 amended. Proposing amendment to the city charter relative vacancies on elected boards by majority vote of the remaining members of that board.
Alderman O'Brien?
I would like to make a motion for final passage of R-18073 as amended and pursuant to RSA 49-B, semi-colon, 4, dash, A, I, B, instructed by the clerk to submit within 10 days to propose charter change to the state agencies for review.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Cle and then Alderman Jettie.
I just wanted to kind of address some of the comments that were made. While I think all of them are very constructive and so on, I did speak to our city clerk and kind of do a little other homework, and one of the things that was brought to mind was that if we went with the idea that the person got appointed whether by the mayor or the board, then would have to run for election at the next effective and regular election, I apologize for my word search here, that we would possibly be expiring a term before it was officially expired. So in other words, in the case of the Board of Education, if we did it at the next election, that had one more year to go, and that may go against state regulation and so on. So something like that may not be able to happen. So I just wanted to kind of make that comment for those that are listening and so on. So while I think that, you know, everything can always be improved upon, I think this is the best method of way to go.
Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, I would like to move to re-refer this to the committee. You know, we've had the public hearing, you know, people have made comments, and we've also received some written correspondence. And, you know, and I think the committee ought to have the chance to discuss those comments and make any changes, if any, they feel is appropriate. I know that the people that work at the polls in my ward, the moderator and the selectmen, the poll workers feel very strongly that we need to do something different than what we've been doing because of the time that they have to spend, and, you know, the turnout has been awful. And while I, you know, I'm very sensitive to the idea that people ought to be elected, they ought to run for positions and get elected to these positions, when you have a, you know, a turnout of less than 10%, or less than 7% in this last time, you know, at a cost of, you know, over 30,000 to the city, and a cost in the lives of these poll workers who are essentially, they get paid a small amount, but it's essentially volunteers, they're there, and it's very discouraging for them to be there all day with such a poor turnout. You know, and I'm sensitive to that, but I see that a change needs to be made, and I think that, you know, Mr. Lyle, who's been working on this for a long time, has some ideas at least worth considering about how to, you know, how to best solve this problem. And so, you know, I've spoken to the chairman of the committee, she's amenable to having her committee consider these things and look at it again. So that's my motion.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. I just have a question, a point of clarity, I think, just, what exactly is the, I know what the original proposal was, what is the, what has been amended?
Attorney Bolton.
What was amended was portions of the language that is to be stricken because the charter had had a previous amendment that added a provision that had not been captured in the codification. So essentially, most of the language of the existing section, including the including language that had been added by the most recent amendment, is to be deleted. So in order to make the resolution accurate, it was an amendment to show the correct version of the language to be stricken. So it essentially makes no difference in what the proposal is.
Alderman Clemens.
So if I'm, please correct me if I'm wrong, then what this proposes to do is to allow a majority of the elected board to appoint a member to fill a vacancy until the next regularly scheduled election. Is that correct?
Alderman Cle, did you want to answer that?
It's not of the next regularly scheduled, but it's of the term expired, correct? That's what, that's how I read it. It was when their term expires, so in other words, if, in the case of the Board of Ed that we just recently had, when his term expired, it was two years, not at the next election, which really was a state election.
Yeah.
Alderman Cle.
If I, what I meant is the next regular city election, so in the case of this last special election, if somebody had been appointed, they would have been appointed to the term to fill out the end of the year, and then somebody would run, because that's when the term was up, so they would run in that election, is that?
At the end of their term.
How that would work?
At the end of their term.
But let me further clarify, if there was a, if there was three years left, let's suppose there was three years left on the end of Alderman McCarthy's term, that we would be, the vacancy would only be filled until this fall?
Attorney Bolton.
That is not what the current proposal is. The current proposal is for the election of someone by the remaining members of that body to be for the remainder of the unexpired term.
Okay.
Now, what you suggest is a possible alternate arrangement, but that is not the proposal before you now.
Alderman Clemens.
Then I certainly will support Alderman Jettie's motion to send it back to committee.
Alderman O'Brien and then Alderman Cle.
Thank you. I am, I'm going to defend the pending motion that I made, given that, to remind this board, we're on reading number six. This has been read before this board six times. If we look at tonight's agenda, we see a lot of people who are volunteers that have come up and run for various importance. I know one of, somebody in our audience said that they don't care about some other boards and put a degree of importance, but I think anybody who volunteers, and theoretically, we volunteer our times, at times too, to be on the Board of Aldermen because of our commitment to the city. And it seems that these people who seek or get asked by the mayor and get called to serve, it seems we have a very good, excellent track record with this. And we look by, in tonight's agenda, just how many people are reappointed to the boards. So I feel extremely confident that through a proper vetting process, that members of this board, and keep in mind, when people who are appointed, they are vetted by the personnel board. So I imagine that procedure would be much the same when it comes up with a name as an Alderman. And then it would become before the full board to recognize and vet it again on that. So I think we have done more than our due diligence with that. And keep in mind, I can't, through a seance or anything, have the intentions of my good friend and Alderman Brian McCarthy. But as having many a discussion with him, one must remember, this was the way the board used to do it. It is, you know, protected by a past, you know, practice, from what I've come to understand. And the thing is, by coming up with this idea, I think we're following much in a way that our predecessors had basically brought up a name and nomination. Now, we could discuss it all night, but the thing is this, when it comes down to, we're talking about the rarity of somebody moving out, or whatever, is there personal reasons, or perhaps as we tragically suffered with the death of our President Brian McCarthy, I hope that never happens again, I'm sure we all do. But these are very rare circumstances, and the key of this is look is to run a special election is $30,000. Within, by one of the gentlemen who testified this evening, remind us that we've had three special elections. That's $90,000 that we have spent in special elections for an extremely low percentile that has come up. Now, we can have a combination system, but if we really got to do diligence to the taxpayer, I think that we can just ruffle through and go with, by proper vetting procedures, pick a candidate that was willing to serve on this particular board, or any board that is, comes under this, and to have them fill out the remainder of that particular term, and then allow it to go to the regular type of race, and save, 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 because it happened three times, to taxpayers of the city of Nashua with special election.
Alderman Cle.
I want to address two things. To answer Alderman Clemens' comments about the three years and going to the term, I'm not sure that it, we can change the term. In other words, if we went to the next election, we may be expiring their term before it does, and I'm not sure that we can do that. But I don't know that for a fact, it was just kind of in conversation, so that's why I made that comment. And then there was other comments that were made about that the second next vote getter gets something that nature, I know that was a comment that was thrown around. In many cases, even on this board, they run completely unopposed, and I can tell you from having lived in this city long enough that you would see, you know, pick three, and there are only three people to pick. That seems to be what happens here. And the second person, just because of the second vote getter, doesn't really mean it is the feeling of the, so I would really not be in favor of the second person in charge getting something like that. If we were to elect an alternate, that might be something different, but in that case, and as far as the other board members that were brought up, their appointments, they're not elected, and that's the way it is. So I agree with my colleague here to my left that we bantered this, yes. Thank you. I was having a memory, memory block. So I used that word.
Thank you, Alderman.
I think we bantered this long enough, and I'd like to take a final vote on it and move it forward.
Alderman Dowd.
My one concern, I mean, if the majority of the board wanted to go back, I think you just, you can discuss it all you want, but I can tell you that 16 years ago, myself and Julia Ward were selected by the Board of Ed to fill two vacancies, and I think the two of us did a hell of a job serving on the Board of Education, and so I think that process works.
Alderman Malisi Golia, then Alderman Laws, then Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. I have a question for Attorney Bolton and then a comment. Attorney Bolton, would we indeed, if it came to filling a vacancy on any of the elected boards, would we indeed be referring those people to the Personnel Committee?
This board, well, this board wouldn't, right, on other, as to vacancies on other boards.
Elected boards.
Right. The other elected boards would be filling their own vacancies however they chose. Now, this board could devise its own process, it could be considered, the vacancy could be considered by the board as a whole on a single evening, it could bring up names on one evening, refer all of them to committee, to do whatever procedure desired as far as interviewing or checking credentials or otherwise, learning about the various nominees. So it would be up to the board as to how to conduct.
Okay, but currently, in the, in the proposed legislation, that's not part of the process. In my experience, when something happened on the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed just handled that and appointed someone. So the people from the various elected boards, unlike the appointed, the number of appointed boards we have, would not be obligated to refer people to our Personnel Committee. They would handle it within their own, okay, thank you. I guess, I actually support this piece of legislation, and I totally get, because I've been there as a selectman, being there and no one's there, and it's kind of like when you work in retail, or, you know, you're working at an ice cream shop or a hot dog stand, the most boring thing in the world is not to have anything to do. And it's a very long, tiring day, which becomes longer and more tiring when you only have 100 people show up. So I totally understand the need to look for another process. I also, Mr. Lyle and I have had multiple conversations about this, and my concern about nominations from the Aldermen to, or from the mayor to the Board of Aldermen for their approval, and if they don't approve, then the vacancy continues, is that when you don't have smooth sailing between the mayor or among the members of the Board of Aldermen, that could become very contentious and could also look like cronyism. And so I worry about what we would end up with, with that process. And I think several of us here have lived through changes in this process, and I feel like, this is like doing a contract, a labor union contract, it's like there's never a win. It's, we lived with it for a while, and then we seemed to come back and revisit it. But I do support what we have before us. That being said, like Alderman Dowd, if people would like to send this back to committee, I am willing to support that, only for the reason that the public hearing has been held, but the committee has not had an opportunity to respond to that. And if the chair of that committee, who's nodding her head yes to me, is comfortable and believes that would be the process, to have it come back to committee, then I'm willing to support it going back to committee, with the understanding, right now, I'm good with it.
Thank you. I have Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, and then I'll come back over here.
I too have a question for Corporation Counsel. Sorry for peppering you with this. You pantomimed earlier that what we previously did in these situations with the city is a little different than what is proposed in this, and I'm just curious what the difference is and why we are going with this.
Previously, in the event that the remainder of the term of the official who had vacated the office extended beyond the next municipal election, the vacancy would only be filled until the next municipal election, whereupon there would be an election to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the term, essentially the ensuing two years plus.
Thank you, I like that. For all of the reasons that, welcome, by the way, Ben. Thank you. Alderman Clemens and Alderman Golia said, I completely understand your frustration, Alderman O'Brien, and I, this has got to be a thorn in your side, but, I mean, we're dealing with, I mean, this is sacred, this is democracy here, and we're talking about the will of the people, and I feel like if there is any doubt, then there's no reason not to send it back to committee. And we don't need to expedite this because we have until November, right?
Point of order, if I may, I
What's your point of order?
Do I have a right to respond to my personal feelings of frustration?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad he knows how I feel.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
Okay, so first I'd like to thank Attorney Bolton for coming on.
Okay, so first, I'd like to thank Attorney Bolton for coming on his desk bed. I, when everybody is working at the polls, like Mr. Senate, they're doing it because they care about our city, and because they're, it's not a career position, they're paid barely enough to apologize for being there all day. So I want to, I want to recognize that that happens, and that is important for us to make a decision that doesn't cost the city unnecessary money, and also acknowledges the position that people who are running the polls are in. I also want to recognize the role that the public plays in this. It's not, getting to the polls is not an even race for everybody. Some people are walking from a distance, some people are taking buses, some people are taking time off of work, they're juggling children, so it's a challenge. So we've talked at length about poor voter turnout, but at the end of the day, there's like two people to vote for on one position, so it's difficult for the individual voter to show up for a special election. So I'm in favor of changing this system. I don't have a problem with the amendment that we have at the moment, because I think it's as fair as you can get, given the circumstances. I can't agree with the logic of just picking the next runner-up, because those situations vary wildly. I believe our next, this special election we just had, the next runner-up would have been Chris Williams, regardless of whether he was still interested in the position, regardless of how the community felt. We can't just default to the, the next runner-up. As Alderman Klee referenced, if we have, right now, many uncontested elections, someone just has to put their name in the hat, and regardless of whether they're actually knocking on doors, or really making a go of it, you know, all efforts are not equal. Therefore, they shouldn't be treated equal. So I'm not in favor of entertaining the next runner-up just as an auto choice. I do appreciate the effort that Mr. Lyle put into considering an amendment of his own. I think we should review it, because, well, it seems problematic, from what Alderman Klee and our city clerk said, we have to be careful that we don't accidentally offset the balance of elections. We, there may be, there may be some opportunity there. But finally, and I think this is the most important, we just heard a lot of public comment about it tonight, so the larger public hasn't had a chance to review what's going on in the hearing, consider it, and then give their feedback, too. So to Alderman Laws' point, I think we can't speed past this, we need to do our jobs and our due diligence. Alderman O'Brien is right, we've gone over this over and over again, but that doesn't mean that new information wasn't presented tonight that we could be reviewing.
I just want to ask the city clerk, if we re-refer this, what's the timeframe for this getting where it needs to be on the ballot?
Well, thank you, Madam President. When it's, I would need it probably back, no, later, sometime in June, because it needs 45 days in order to be sent. The Secretary of State, Department of Revenue Administration, Attorney General's Office has 45 days to respond back to it. When it comes back from, their response comes back, then the board will have seven days after that response, in order to decide whether they order it to the ballot or not. Thank you very much. I had Alderman Tenza, and then Alderman Clemens, and then Alderman O'Brien, and Alderman Gathwright.
Just a question for, logistical question for Corporation Counsel. On a 15-member board, if someone steps down, and there's a tie, 7-7, as to who's going to fill the open position, who breaks the tie?
Someone would have to get a majority, so if it stays 7 to 7, you haven't elected anyone.
Who'd I call on next? All right, Alderman Clemens, and then I'll go back on this side. Okay?
Thank you. Just briefly, the only reason that, well, the reason I'm supporting sending this back to committee is because I, I don't support the way that it is currently written. I think that the way that we did it prior to the, you know, having a special election is a better way to do it, because it promotes democracy, and it promotes making sure that the public is involved as much as the public can be involved in the democratic process. And so, you know, my suggestion would be to go back and change this to the way that we used to do it prior to the charter change with the election, because that way, we're never two, we're never appointing somebody more than two years to a term. And I think that, that that, I think, would, would be a better balance, and would balance the public's, you know, right to vote on their representative with the expediency of filling the vacancy. So for those reasons, are the reasons I think we should send it back, in addition to the fact that, you know, clearly, from what I can see here tonight, that there's still some debate that should be had on it.
Alderman Gathwright was next.
Actually, I feel the same way that it should go back. I agree with Alderman Jettie, Ald, Ben Clemens, and who else? Alderman Law. Yes, I agree with them all. I was one of the ones that did not care for it in the very beginning, when we first started this process. So for me, I'm glad that it will go back. I was, I'm really happy that people came out and spoke about their concerns with this particular bill. So maybe we all can do a little more diligence in changing it to something that's more amicable to everyone, basically.
Alderman O'Brien, then Alderman Dowd.
I would just like to say that we're not on any uncharted waters here, or any legalities, or anything else like that. Many states, when a senator steps down, the governor appoints, there's no special election. And I think, I do trust my colleagues here on the board to make the proper choice. If you want to stir up your authority, then that's up in a way to you, but I think this bill was brought together by good intentions and legal means, and I think we lost sight of the goal of saving the taxpayers the undue expense of $30,000 per election. And yet, may I remind that, from what I hear in some testimony, my brother Alderman Laws says that, you know, kind of a little bit, what was the term, but, you know?
Frustrated.
Frustrated. I am not frustrated. I think the proper definition would be perplexed. And the reason I am perplexed is, as well as myself, let me read to you the endorsers. And the endorsers of this bill is the late Alderman-at-Large Brian McCarthy, Alderman-at-Large Roshana Kelly, myself, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Lopez, Alderman-at-Large Brendan Michael Laws, and Alderman Mary Ann Malisi-Golia. So I'm perplexed. Where was the vetting when, this is the sixth reading, where was, this is the 11th hour, we are, I hope we can get this done by June, to perhaps, to get it on the charter, but this is the 11th hour parachute that got thrown, right about here.
Alderman Dowd, then Alderman Karen, then Alderman Malisi-Golia.
Two quick things. If it gets referred back, I would ask that the Chair of that committee, Alderman Karen, call a meeting as soon as possible, and not necessarily, if it's not for two or three weeks, wait that amount of time.
The next meeting is April 1st.
Yeah, I would move it up, if I was, my call. The other thing is, I just want to tell you that voter turnout is a real bugaboo with me, and even in regular city municipal elections, it just fries me, because it should be much higher than we have. The, I'll give you a quick story. At the day of the special election, I had "I voted" sticker on my coat. I went back to a Village of Kestrel Farm board meeting, we have seven members. All of the six asked me, what election is that? No one even knew about it. The city makes a very poor, if you're not on Facebook, or following, what is it, City Sounding Board, and, you know, it just doesn't get the word out, number one. Number two, it was fairly chilly that day, although the sun was shining, but people are not going to take time off from work, or make a special effort unless they have some interest in the election. Fortunately, Alderman Clemens had a lot of support, so all those people came out to support him. But the turnout was ridiculous, and for us to be spending $100,000 plus in the last three years is, to me, ridiculous. We could either reduce the city budget by $100,000, or we could add another employee, but we certainly could spend the money in a much better, better way, because I'll tell you, the budget this year is tight. And to be spending it and then get a few hundred people out to vote is, you know, crazy.
Alderman Karen.
So first of all, I don't think anyone that wants to send this back to committee is looking to continue running special elections. I think, from me personally, because we had this meeting before we had the public hearing, I think it's important that we take some of what they've said, whether you like it or not, and really evaluate it, and maybe we have to make some changes. And I myself, I've worked the polls, and been there, and gone crazy, because no one shows up, and I think that if appointing someone for a short period of time works, I think we can do that. But my question, Madam President, to City Clerk, if we hold this personnel meeting April 1st, is that too late, or, I mean?
No, it's not.
Okay, so Alderman Dowd, sorry, but April 1st will be the day. So I think that we need to take.
Got to come back to the full board, too, so.
Full board, too.
Right, but it would be within two weeks. Right. So my thinking is that everyone has some ideas and questions and concerns. I think the place to do it is at the committee on April 1st, and let the committee put something together that is conducive and a compromise that fits everyone. I certainly don't want to see us spending thousands of dollars for nothing, but let's make sure we have everything in place so that legal can say, yes, it's concise, and we don't have any problems up in Conca. Thank you.
Alderman Malisi-Golia.
Yes, thank you. Just to address Alderman O'Brien's point about being perplexed, and for others who may be listening, because I did support that, as I stated earlier, I was here ready to vote for that, but as I also stated earlier, we had the public hearing, we got feedback, and as Alderman Karen said, I think we have an obligation to respond to that. And so, again, I will be supporting it going back to committee. Thank you.
Alderman Klee, and then Alderman Lopez.
Two things. One is, I'm not opposed to it really going back to committee, I was just hoping that we could move it forward. I'm not sure that there'll be changes, but I do agree, the public has spoken, and we should listen, and, and perhaps, the, the comment that Alderman Clemens had made of doing with the term can be acceptable, we may just have to do a little bit more homework on it. But the other thing that I want to state is that, I make a joke every election, that I want Ward III to beat Ward I as far as voter turnout, and it just ain't going to happen. But however, I do want to make a comment, percentage of voter turnout, we nailed it at 11-point-something percent, which is really sad.
Alderman Lopez.
I've got a question for, for Attorney Bolton. If we do alter the amendment, do we have to have another public hearing?
Depends how extensive the amendment is. If it's, if it is what I've heard being exposed by Alderman-at-Large Clemens, I would recommend we have another public hearing.
Okay. And then, for myself, I would just say that this isn't the first time I've actually voted to table, postpone, or alter a piece of legislation that I sponsored. That's because when I look at it, and I have my initial impression of what it is, that's just my impression, and it looks like something I want to move forward to discuss. I think that we have a process for discussion at the committee level, and then for particularly important pieces of legislation, we have public comment, we have public hearings, and we have to be receptive of that. The first time that I changed my opinion on a piece of legislation I sponsored, I was called dishonorable. In my opinion, it is my responsibility to hear more than just what my initial impression is, and to move forward with it. I have not actually changed my opinion of the legislation. I just think it's important that information has just been proposed that is valid in my mind, and at least should be reviewed by the public before we move forward with something that affects their ability. So I just want to have a little bit more of a hearing on this. I don't necessarily plan to pivot and completely change my opinion.
Further discussion on the motion to re-refer?
Move the motion?
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Well, did you refer the motion, because there was another subsequent motion made, but preliminary inquiry. We are voting on the motion that I originally did make, correct?
No, we're moving, we're voting on the motion to re-refer.
So motion re-refer has the higher priority motion? Okay.
Motion is to re-refer Resolution 18073 as amended back to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Further discussion on that motion? Alderman Klee.
Just one more comment. If, and this is again to Attorney Bolton, in reference to Alderman Lopez's comments, if we hear this on April 1st, would that be a public hearing at that time? Or is that just a discussion, and then whatever comes out of that, then it goes to a public hearing? I just want to get, I just want to make sure that we get a timeline, I'm a little concerned about the June date.
Where you are now.
Right.
You're simply sending it back to committee, you're not scheduling another public hearing.
If it gets changed, as perhaps was discussed, then it would be best to have a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
And then, that would take so much time, and then, we would vote on it on the same day, like we're doing today? Is that the way it would, is that the way it would work?
If that's the will of the board, sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're meeting the timeline.
We'll, we'll know that as things progress, I guess. It's certainly possible that you can still meet the timeline.
Okay, thank you.
Motion is to re-refer Resolution 18073 to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Want to oppose, that motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-103, authorizing the conveyance of a discontinued portion of Conant Road.
Alderman Jettie.
I moved for final passage of R. 19103.
Motion is for final passage, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-104, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Education and the Nashville Teachers Union Local 1044, AFT, AFL-CIO, Unit D, food service workers from September 1, 2018, through August 31, 2021.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 19104, and I'd like to speak to it.
Motion is for final passage, Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this bargaining unit, their funding comes from the revenues generated through the food sales and federal funds, no city funds, so it's sort of self-funding, and they are certainly not the highest paid people by far anywhere in the, in the city. So it's a very fair contract that went through the, for the Budget Committee with unanimous approval.
Further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is for final passage of Resolution 19104, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-107, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $50,250 of unanticipated revenue from Fund Number 1000, General Fund, Account Number 43295, revenue from federal grant into Fund Number 7074, School Special Education Expendable Trust Fund.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R. 19-107 by roll call.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Malisi-Golia.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 13 ayes.
Resolution 19107 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 19-113 adopting Environment and Energy Committee recommendations.
Alderman O'Brien.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 19113.
Motion is to recommend, motion is for final passage, Resolution 19113. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of Ordinance 18-030 increasing fees for leased city parking spaces.
Alderman Laws.
I'd like to make a motion to re-fer this to Personnel and Administrative Affairs, and I'd like to speak on it, if that's right.
Sure.
Well, first of all, despite what was said earlier, this only affects the monthly lease fees, just as a point of order. So it's not, people who go downtown to shop aren't paying more money to park there and patronize downtown businesses. So this is only people who live and work downtown. And the entire point of this was just to get it up to market rate because everywhere around us is charging more than double than we're charging for monthly lease parking. And then the, Alderman Jettie pointed out that there used to be, previously, or the way it is right now, I suppose, there is a disparity between uncovered parking and covered parking, and it costs more for covered parking for obvious reasons in New England. And in this, in this new legislation, there is no disparity. And so, we're going to send it back and amend that. And that's what this is all about.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to also note that when we discussed it in committee, we also discussed the preference of many of the Aldermen to consider using it more productively, not necessarily in the general fund, but we had talked about possibly a special revenue fund that could support the maintenance or upkeep of the parking garages, which, if they need it, comes out of the general fund.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I think this is a good move, and I'd like to get more information myself about what the impact will be on businesses downtown that currently lease or that are looking to lease and that potentially might want to move into the downtown, if this would be helpful or a deterrent, or what the case might be on that.
Motion is to re-fer Ordinance 1830. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Ordinance 19-035 rescinding the right turn on red prohibition from the Costco exit onto the Daniel Webster Highway.
Alderman Karen.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-18-035.
Motion is for final passage of Ordinance 1935. Discussion on that motion? Alderman Clemmons.
I'm sure my wife's going to be really excited about this one, so I'm going to say I'm supporting it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, the motion is for final passage of Ordinance 1935. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. New business resolutions.
First reading Resolution 19-114 authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $6 million for the Phase III line landfill expansion of the Nashville Four Hills landfill to include engineering services.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Jettie, Alderman Malisi Golia. Okay. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the first reading of R. 19114 by roll call, assign it to the Budget Review Committee, and schedule a public hearing for Monday, March 25, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldomatic Chamber.
You've heard the motion? Any discussion on that? Would the clerk take the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Malisi Golia.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
We have 13 ayes.
That motion carries.
First reading Resolution 19-115 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $120,000 of unanticipated revenue for Fund 6,000 Solid Waste Fund, Account 44286, cover material revenue, into Fund 6,000 Solid Waste Fund, Account 55699, other contracted services.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Malisi Golia, Alderman Schmidt. And that will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution 19-116 changing the purposes up to $10,000 on that expended bond proceeds from the roof replacement work at Fairgrounds Middle School and Ledge Street Elementary School to pay cost of roof assessments at Main Densible, Birch Hill, and Bicentennial Elementary Schools.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Malisi Golia, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, and myself. And given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution 19-117 changing the use of funds for a wastewater fund capital improvements project from Bridge Street overflow detention basement improvements to wet weather facility screen and rake upgrades.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Karen, Alderman Malisi Golia, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and the Board of Public Works.
First reading of Resolution 19-118 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of up to $218,486 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into transit grant activity, Federal Transit Authority, FTA, operating grant.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderman Malisi Golia, Alderman Schmidt, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 19-119 authorizing Penetech Corporation and Penetech East Utility Inc. to enter into a term loan with Co-Bank ACB.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Malisi Golia, Alderman Tenza. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Penetech Water Special Committee.
First reading of Resolution 19-120 changing the name of Panther Drive to Officer Jane Roche Drive.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderman Malisi Golia, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Clemmons. Thank you. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 19-121 relative to the acceptance appropriation of $43,113 from the United States Department of Justice into police grant activity, 2018 Justice Assistance Grant, multi-jurisdictional.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderman Malisi Golia, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 19-122 discontinuing three expandable trust funds.
Additional sponsors? Seeing none, okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign it to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution 19-123 relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget for the City of Nashville General Enterprise and Special Revenue Funds.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Tenza. There being no objection, I'll accept the first reading of Resolution 19123, refer it to the Budget Review Committee, and schedule a public hearing from Thursday, May 16, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. at the Nashville High School North Auditorium. New business ordinances?
First reading of Ordinance 19-040 establishing Administrative Services Division and Director position.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gathright, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment. We have one speaker signed up, Lori Ordolano.
Good evening, Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Just wanted to share my concerns again about this new director position coming in. I hope that there's more discussion about the office, the assessing office itself, and getting some outside leadership in that office. I just cannot fathom or imagine promoting from within or not having a chief down in that office, given the amount of work that's there. And I think that the mayor's comment on the position replacing the chief with this director position, I really believe there's other positions down there you're missing, and I'm not certain why in the three months they haven't been identified, but you're definitely short in a few areas, and it doesn't seem like we would want to stay in that mode for another entire year, but maybe we missed our window. Regarding the comments at the last week's meeting, I really want to offer this challenge out to you and the mayor that I become concerned when I hear the mayor say that we're going to reevaluate in five years. Five years is too long. And that what KRT did was sound, everything's equalized, it was a job well done. You know, we need to recognize that KRT did the best they could, but it was a garbage-in, garbage-out scenario. And if we can't get down to understanding that the data that they used wasn't necessarily good and resulted in not necessarily equalized valuations, you know, I certainly won't be on any common ground with this mayor anytime soon. And the case in point for that is what happened on Berkeley Street. And I brought pictures to show you. Berkeley Street is the case street on why the KRT model really didn't work. So our, our street gets modeled, they come out with all the new assessments in, in August, and then all of a sudden, my husband and I go in and meet with KRT, and we ask for our valuation to be lower to $517,000 based on what was on our street. We didn't use sales data then because we didn't understand that. We just looked at all these very comparable homes, and we went in, and we had the meeting with Ken Rogers, the president. He offered to come to the house. He recognized the problem with our card. He was the one who identified the sales chasing issue, thought it was that case, and off we went. The next thing you know, we don't get Ken or anyone from KRT coming to our home. It's in October that I reach out to KRT and ask why they didn't come, and I found out then that KRT was asked by the city to go down the street and reevaluate it again. And they picked five homes. So, so in this reevaluation, no one on the street knew this was happening. And so they picked five properties, well, they went down the whole street. What I was told after by CFO Griffin was that Rob Tozier came to my office, I gave him 55 property cards, told him, drive down your street again, this time really look and fix some stuff. Now, when the mayor told us that KRT came in and looked at every property in this city because they gave a visual evaluation to everything and built the model, I don't really agree with that. It was a drive-by, it was really a feel of the neighborhood. The concept that they looked at every house was really not the case. And really, when you think about it over maybe a four-month period, I don't think they really had the time to look at every property, 28,000 parcels. It was really about creating a model and using the sales data to create a model. So they got a feel of neighborhoods, I think, by driving through. I saw them come through my street, and they were going, you know, 10, 15 miles an hour, but doing that slow, but still not enough to really be looking at every house. So I take exception with that. I don't think they had a good visual on every home. But when they came down a second time, the goal of that, unknown to any of us on Berkeley Street, was to get a good visual because things weren't right. And so, they came down and they adjusted five properties. And in the process of doing that, they found another $300,000 valuation that they could raise. And they gave a reason for it. They said, oh, the first property, we're going to change it to, from a grade C to a grade B because most of the homes on Berkeley Street are grade B. The problem with, was that there were another seven homes that were still grade C, and they didn't touch those. So out of 55 homes, 48 are grade B, seven were grade C. They changed one to up the assessment 60,000, and they don't look at the others that are grade C, and clearly some of them are beautiful homes that the grade had been done 40 years ago and no one changed. So why did they do that? Why did those homes stay grade C? So I looked at that, and I said, well, that's kind of crazy. And then on the other homes, they went down, 13 Berkeley, 17 Berkeley, 46 Berkeley, 50 Berkeley, and they raised them anywhere from 46,000 to 90,000. A pretty good, pretty good hit. And the reasons they noted on those was, we've got to justify it, they're being depreciated for unknown renovations. I saw that, and I said, unknown renovations? How do you, how do you create a valuation for something unknown? They didn't, and these houses that they raised, these five houses, they never went to the door. They never knocked on the door and said, could we come in, or we want to evaluate your house? Well, none of these had unknown renovations. They had all had permits pulled that were improperly or not captured by the assessing department. So in my opinion, they weren't unknown at all. You just go look at the permits. They were done. So here's a model that KRT made, and they ran this model, and they created valuation, and then they come back and they take a really good look, and they go, mm, there's another 300 grand over here, and they change them. And that, to me, I was actually shocked that KRT did that because it put them, in my opinion, in a very bad position. They should have said to the city of Nashua, hey, this is your dirty laundry, you didn't collect this stuff right. You go back in and knock on the door and get in the house and evaluate this stuff and fix it because now we've got to throw our model to the wind and go back and do your work. And the thing that killed me about their evaluation, the very first home on Berkeley Street, I brought some pictures, which is where they started, is a very old colonial that has fallen into disrepair, serious disrepair. I mean, so KRT starts there and sees a house like this. It's, when you, when you see a house that, you know, you think there are parts of it you could put your arm through, you say, well, there's some deferred maintenance there. I wouldn't call that a B grade anymore. KRT looked at this house and said, well, that's a B. No. And that's worth 400 grand. Okay, cool, that's fine. But then you come right up from it, three houses up, and you got a beautiful painted Lady Victorian, little bit larger, attached to car garage, beautifully done, eight permits, very well rated. And this is 13 grand more, would it be rated? How can that be? How could you look at that house there and basically give it 3% more for this house here? Next to it is a beautifully restored, conventional foreclosed home, wrapped in vinyl, transparent windows, very lovely done. This has a grade C. So what's it assessed at? 329. That's a really nice valuation. How can this be so low and this house that has fallen into such disrepair be so high, graded above it? And then you go up to the, what we'll say, the better, all of these homes are down in the block between Cortlandt and Layton where land values are reduced because it's the block between Cortlandt and Layton. So land valuation is maybe 20%, 20% lower down there. And then you come up to the block where land valuation is high, and these two homes sit next to each other. This is a painted Lady Victorian, very nicely done, a lot of exterior work, new kitchen put in, but older, older windows, you know, certainly not all stored by any means, but very nicely maintained property. And this is sitting at 410, virtually the same price as the house at 1 Berkeley Street. The building value on this house is 250, and the building value on the first house is 280. How can that be? This house next to it just sold. This house, the exterior is definitely better than the first one I showed you, but if you walk into this house, you're in 1945, and it is really... And it is really 1945. And it just sold to a young couple for 400, which was a good price, high price. It needs a lot of work. But it's hard to believe that KRT would put this house above this house, and they're right next to each other. They're right next to each other. They're, they're neighbors. So I look at what KRT did on, on our street, and I say, "That wasn't well done." And people have abated on some of these changes, and I think very legitimately so. I think the second go-around on some of, some of those houses was absolutely uncalled for. And people were irate because once they put the change on, there was no hearing process anymore because it was the second go-around. And all they had left was to obey. And, you know, the assessing office is like, "Well, what's the problem? Their taxes went down." The problem is, you know, one of these houses took an $80,000 hit for honestly, I don't even know why. You know? So, and that, so the model shows you right there. There's a problem with the KRT model. Go over to Menadnock because I talked about Menadnock in the last meeting. And if you just, that was an interesting street, too. That's a street where the model fails, and it's right in the old neighborhood. Because they had one, two, three, four, five sales, and three of them were in the KRT window where KRT took the data and used it to make their model. They captured the sales data and built their model. Cool. So a house sells for $355,000. It's used to build the model, and KRT spits out a price on that of 269. That's pretty off from the sale price. And that house ends up with a 76% valuation. That's what the model did. Another house sold in this, within the window of their model for 232. It comes in at 200. It's at 86% valuation. Now, their goal was to be between 90 and 110. They have another one that sells for 230. It comes in at 182 with their model, 79%. They have another one that sells outside of the window. It comes in at 520, it sells for 522. It comes in at 489. That one hit at 94%. Everything else hit at 81, 76, 86, 79. So what does that tell you? Well, I don't know. I guess, you know, when I bought my house and I said, "Well, we kind of overpaid for it." And they said, "No, there's no such thing." KRT's model shows me all over the city there's overbought houses. They just, they're not worth what they paid for them. And the model will show you relative to other homes, there, that's not the valuation they should have. That's fine. I'll accept that. Let's apply that to everyone, though, when we're debating and we're doing our, we're following our rules. Let's apply it to everyone. So, you know, that's, that's kind of an interesting, interesting hit. And so I think we have to recognize that there are limitations in that KRT model. And there are plenty of people who don't see equity in that model. And Berkeley Street is a picture street. Menadnock Street is another street that really puts it out there. You know, I think we can say that they did the best they could. It was an inherently flawed system. We don't want to just focus on IT improvements. We want to focus on the actual development of the card and the modeling that we're using for that card. And we want to, you know, get rid of practices that weren't good practices to be doing, like the way we applied the median ratio and the possibility that we were chasing some of these sales. That's important stuff. And nobody wants to recognize it in the city, but boy, it's important to me. So I get worried that every time we talk about bringing in a consultant, it's KRT. You know, we're bedfellows now with them. Is there anyone else we can use? Should we look at somebody else? When we do this big multi, you know, $1.5 million contract, would we even bid it? Do they now have precedent, and they're the ones that come all the time? You know, I think we should expand our thinking, and I think we should look at other experts, too. I, I, I think that's a good idea. KRT, to my disappointment, when this happened and they went down the street the second time, and I called them in October, and I said, "You haven't come to my house." And they said, "Well, you know, Mr. Duhamel told us you wouldn't let, let us in." So we never showed up. Of course, I wanted them to come. Went to the meeting for that. So Mr. Duhamel had a bitterness to him and made certain that KRT didn't come to our house. So that's when KRT said to me, you know, "Hey, we went down your street. We took another drive-by. The city asked us to do it. We drove down. We raised five homes." I said, "Well, who did you lower? Nobody." "Oh, how does that work?" I said, "What other streets did you go down? Only yours." I said, "They didn't ask you to go down any other streets? I gave a package. I looked at my street behind me. I looked at Concord Street. You didn't look at any other street? Nope. Just yours." City said, "Just do yours again." That was very targeting. That was really very targeting. That was not a great model approach. And then, when I wrote a letter to CFO Griffin, and I, I said, "Who, who really authorized this? Why did we do this? And who authorized KRT to do this drive-by and make these changes?" And this appears outside the scope of work. Well, KRT writes back, John Griffin sends them to KRT. And KRT writes back to that request that "The street was reviewed along with the rest of the city during the valuation process, the initial process. It was reviewed a second time at the homeowner's request during the peering process. Both reviews were part of our contract." So all of a sudden, the second review was put on me. And that's why when people on my street called the assessing office and said, "Why were we evaluated again?", they were told, "Your neighbor complained, and she caused the houses to go up." That was not right. I never had a dialogue with KRT. I was never the one in charge of KRT. I didn't order a second go-down on the street. It's absurd. And why would I do that and not have them come to my own home that I was trying to reduce? It was really disappointing for me to read that. And it made me think a lot differently about KRT when I did the Right to Know Law and pulled those minutes and saw that that's how it was documented. Been spending a lot of time reading the IAAO manuals. And there's this nice one on standards on mass appraisal for real estate property. And it talks about how important it is to value defend your numbers. And this is the guide that everyone here throws at me constantly, the mayor and CFO Griffin. We follow the IAAO manual. Great. It says, "The staff should also be prepared to support individual valuations as required, preferably through comparable sales. At a minimum, the staff should be able to produce a property record and explain the basic approach used to estimate the value of the property. The property owner should never be told simply that the computer or the system produced the appraisal. In general, the staff should tailor the explanation to the taxpayer's knowledge and expertise. Equations converted to tabular form can be used to explain the basis for valuation." We could never get anyone to explain our card or have any information brought to us on how it was built. We never got there. We're in abatement without an explanation. And as I read these things, and these are the standards we use, I feel we've got a lot of work to do on these standards. One last item. I did, I didn't realize Mr. Tebow was going to talk about the Board of Assessors seat, the part, the alternate. And I did, I discovered that seat had expired essentially. Very oddly, I just happened to be going to Board of Assessors meetings, and they kept canceling meetings. And I finally went to the assessing woman's clerical lady and said, "Why do we cancel? Why aren't we calling our alternate in? Keep the meetings going." And she said, "We don't have an alternate. Her seat expired a year ago." I said, "Are you kidding me? We're not running meetings because we don't have an alternate? You know, okay, I can do that job." I said, "That's one I'd be interested in. I would only have a few meetings a year, probably two or three. It's an entry-level position that would give me a voice, and I already go to the meetings." So I typed an email to the mayor, and I said, "This seat is open. No one's on it. I'd be interested in it." I ended up reaching out to Patricia. I was traveling. She called me back on a Monday, and she said, "Oh, just to let you know, the person who had it prior wants to do it again. The seat's not available. She's going to receive the seat." I said, "Okay, that's the way it is." And then I decided to go meet the individual who was supposed to have the seat and talk to her. And I, I asked her if she knew what was going on in the assessing office, and the answer was no. Have she had kept up? Does she receive the packets? No. Did she ever receive the packets? No. And she said to me, you know, "I made it clear that if the mayor could find somebody else to do this job, I really am very busy with my downtown work, and I really don't want to do it. I will only do it if he can't find somebody else." Well, that was a little different from what I had heard. So I typed an email, and I went back to the mayor, and I said, "Hey, I really would be interested in the seat. And just to let you know..." To my disappointment, I'm not upset that I didn't get the seat. It's obviously not the place for me. That's fine. This is not my hill to die on. Maybe my best work is done on the outside. It was, and it was just an entry level, you know, foot in the door, maybe go to three meetings. I'm there anyway, maybe have a voice on some things. But he gets to pick it. It's his to pick. I'm disappointed that he did not have the courtesy to respond to my email at all. Nothing. It just went into vapor space. And I'm disappointed that he doesn't take these seats seriously, these seats that he has to fill. We have a little bit of a crisis in that department, and we have some weaknesses in that board. And we could really use a mayor who's using his expertise and reaching out to try and fill these seats with the best people possible. And that may not be me. He may have a better person in mind. That's fine. But at least show me you're working at it. You know? And not that it's just, "Let's hurry up and quickly get someone in there and make this person take it if they really didn't want it because they're the best person." So that, that's a little disappointing. It just shows me how, how far we have to go to really, you know, fix things over there. And I do, I would love to see some public positions available. Maybe, it doesn't have to be anything permanent, but some short-term openings where the public could participate, maybe in policy creation, a one-year seat or panel, a discussion group, work with consultants, try and look at better ways of doing what we do down there. I think there's an opportunity for that. It's not a long-term position. It would just be a short-term thing, and that might be helpful. But not my hill to die on. It's okay that I didn't get it. Thank you.
Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen? I'll start on this side. Alderman Clay.
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of comments. And first, I'd just like to make a comment about the, the Board of Assessors. And I know, just, I just recently found out that Ms. Blaisdell turned it down. She thought she had sent out an email. So she sent me an email. I know she sent it to the mayor's office, too, that she was into this position. I think it was just two days ago that, that I received that email. So, and just to get that, that straight. And the, the other comment I wanted to make is I did not sponsor the administrative position, and not because I don't support it. I, I do support that. And, and I spoke to Ms. Kleiner earlier today, and I've been speaking with her on a regular basis. And I said that I'm glad that we finished Part One, but that I wanted Part Two, Three, Four, and so on, and the process and the policy to be, to be completed timely and so on. And, and I've been assured that they are working on that. I don't know how that process is going to happen. I don't get into the weeds as far as people doing the job. But I did want to personally thank Mrs. Ordolano for the, the work she's done as she's explained to us. And I know that she spent hours of time looking at property cards, educating herself on the process. While I won't speak for anyone else, I can say that during this process, she did educate me on many of the elements of the cards. And, and I brought this to different people's attention and how it was used to calculate property assessments. And while I truly wish things had been a whole lot less contentious, the bottom line is I really do think we're on the road to resolving the past issues and hopefully, you know, ultimately a better and more transparent system. And, and I do want to thank you, Lori, for the work that, that you've done. But I, I also want to thank Kim and Kleiner and so on for, for taking this above and beyond her duties of doing this. I think we are on the road. And, and I think hearing from the public of what they want us to do and how they want us to move forward is important. But ultimately, I think as long as we keep an open mind and go, continue on this road, that we will, we will work things out. And, you know, I, I feel bad that things aren't, haven't always been perfect, but I do think we're heading the right way. Thank you.
Alderman Judd.
I, too, would like to thank Mrs. Ordolano for bringing a lot of these issues to our attention. And, you know, she's been, you know, very articulate about this whole thing, but her voice is not the only one I've heard. A lot of our citizens question the fairness of our current assessment process. And, you know, I think the mayor, by ordering this audit, and I think the audit itself was a, a step in the right direction. And I think, you know, some, I think we can look forward to some, some improvements. And I, I think, you know, the mayor has, has talked about, you know, being on board with, with doing a complete reevaluation. You know, the so-called list and measure, I think is what they call it. I, I, I support that, and I'm, I'm looking forward to, to more on that. I'd also like to congratulate Margaret Lorette, Ward Five resident, on her appointment. And I want to congratulate Alderman Clemmons and welcome him. You know, maybe he ought to be welcoming some of us since he's been here before, but it's our turn to welcome him. And, and lastly, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that next week, we'll be celebrating the, you know, the feast of that great saint and patron of the Christian church. Of course, I'm speaking of St. Joseph.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Alderwoman Malizaglia.
I will just follow up and say, "Yay to St. Joseph, my favorite desserts." I, I, too, would like to welcome Alderman Clemmons and look forward to working with him once again. Congratulations. And thank you to all of those who came in and spoke this evening during the public comment and the public hearing. And one other thing, and Alderman Laws can correct me, but I believe next Tuesday at 6:00, GAD is having their annual meeting in the auditorium. Is that correct? Or? Before PEDC? Yes. Okay, yes. So just for anyone who would like to attend, the, Paul Shea will be doing the annual meeting for GAD in the auditorium at 6:00 PM. And as Alderman Tenzis said, PEDC will follow. Yeah, but thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you for everybody's warm welcome. I just want to be brief and say that I will be raising a pint this Sunday for my favorite saint, which is St. Patrick. And I want everybody to enjoy and have a safe St. Patrick's Day. Make sure you have a designated driver or take an Uber or Lyft home or a cab.
I, too, would like to welcome Alderman Clemmons back to the horseshoe. He's been missed. So welcome back, Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Committee assignments, I mean, committee announcements, that's what I meant. No, I don't want to sign anybody. Committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
Okay, on the 18th, we're going to be starting our series of budget meetings. Everybody on the board has got a list of when those occur. Particularly the Budget Committee, I would like you to study before you come in for that particular department so that you know what to expect and what questions to ask. The budgets pretty much haven't changed, except for a few departments. And I'm sure you'll hear from those departments when they come through. So I will be putting out some other guidance before the first meeting. Actually, the first meeting, I will be occupied somewhere else. I have a previous commitment, but the president of the board will be chairing that particular meeting. And I believe that's Public Health. I believe. Yeah. So, so get familiar with the schedule. Do your homework so that we can preview all of the budgets, all the departments as well as we can. And Alderman Clemmons, welcome to the Budget Committee.
And since 2000, 2010, I think, was the last time I was on that, so.
Other committee announcements? Alderman Lopez.
Subcenter Living Conditions Committee is meeting this Thursday.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Malizaglia? Alderman Maliza Golia.
As I indicated, P E D C will meet next Tuesday at 7:00 PM. And also, I forgot to say, in your mailboxes, you will find the most recent magazine that the chamber has put together. I got some copies of those and thought you might be interested, so those are for you. And if you would like more, I'm sure you can contact the chamber for those. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh. We are adjourned at 9:40 PM. Thank you, everyone.